Alright, so we're getting sorry we're a few minutes late, we're in an executive session beforehand, but we are going to start the work session, discussion topic amusement fee ordinance. Councilman Bornhart, whenever you are ready, sir.
First, I'd like to clear everybody's mind of the 10%, 4% or whatever. We're not, we're not going over that right now. The purpose of this is to get your opinion and your input on this before any decisions are made by anybody. And I, I think it's only fair to try to work with everybody to make sure everybody's on a, on a, on a human pillar. So, anybody out there like to start? Give your opinion, input?
So I'll first start off with, with Councilman Bornhart here. So recently back in the fall, I went to a budgeting meeting here. The new modern standards, new modern ways how municipalities do budget here across the state. And the one thing that caught my attention was the amusement fee. So, uh, the gentleman who did the presentation gave an example how many municipalities across the state have different types of amusement fees to track different types of entertainment back into their city through the amusement fee. And he gave like some different examples that we called and asked about was obviously everybody knows Hershey Park. Hershey, City of Hershey has a different, has their own amusement fee. And what they do is they take a portion of the parking sale and a portion of the ticket sale, and then they take that money and then they reinvest it back into the City of Hershey. Bloomsburg does the same thing, they have an amusement tax on it as well, do the same thing as well. Uh, just recently, I, as after we brought it up, uh, WNEP this story on East Stroudsburg, how they're trying to implement an amusement fee. It's either East Stroudsburg or Stroudsburg, I forget which one it was, on to do that. So I got this idea from the training I went to, and they said, when you take this amusement fee, use it for what it's supposed to be used for, put it back into drawing people back into your city or your municipality to put more people on the streets, to bring more people into the city, to bring more people into people's businesses. Because if you see a lot of these other local municipalities that have many things going on, it puts people into their businesses. And then one example I'll give everybody right now, if, if you're up for New Year's Eve, came downtown Sunbury, there were people in all the different establishments around Cameron Park and Upmarket Street. So for example, Hidden, New Year's Eve was on Tuesday and the Wednesday. Hidden Stories is never open on a Tuesday evening. Uh, Eclipse is not, Midtown Bistro, another different places along Market Street. They are opened up for that night for the event, and they were busy for the entire night. When you go up to the softball field and they have their tournaments up there during the summertime. Wise's gets sold out, Dunkin' Donuts, all the Dollar General, they get sold out, sports drinks and Gatorade. I talked to the one manager up there, up at Turkey Hill, because she's, they're up there when now we need this to taking place. They bring in extra help for those weekends because they know they're gonna be packed. So this is the, I guess the reasoning behind this amusement fee is to use these funds to help promote our city and to help bring people into our city, to help bring more people to our downtown, to our businesses, to help promote our city and also to bring new people in, because we know we have an influx of people on a regular basis. So that is the whole point behind this amusement fee. And so that was the reason why, you know, I had Councilman Bornhart, if this is something he was interested in to look into, because other, this isn't something new, this is something that other municipalities are doing. And if it's something that we think is a good thing for the city, it could be very beneficial to all our businesses by getting more foot traffic into our city, because that's what we need to help support our businesses is, is more and more foot traffic. So does anybody have any comments? And obviously there's comments and there's concerns, so I guess who'd like to go first? Go ahead. Do we need to say name or not?
It would probably be better if you tell us your name.
My name's Erica, I'm, I'm at Bottle Works. So my thing on this whole thing is, we have one machine, we tell you we have one machine, we pay our hundred dollars. How many, how is that being enforced? Like, it hasn't been, I know in the past. I think we also need to go back and look at the policy you have written. Because of, to mine, correct me if I'm wrong, it is listed that it's the police chief's job to go around and enforce this. I feel he has bigger fish to fry than worrying about what laundry machines we have in our establishments. Should you know what we have? Sure. Should we pay our fee? Absolutely. But someone else needs to be in charge. Do you have a correct listing of all the businesses and all the machines they have? And are you collecting that money instead of going and putting a new tax on? If we should ensure that all the duty now is being seen through properly all the way.
So last year, we realized that a lot of these fees were not being tracked and collected. By the end of last year, Councilman Bornhart and I got with the chief, got with his code officers, and said, listen, we gotta figure out what's going on with the situation as you just explained. We went out at the end of the year, got a new updated list on who has the machines, how many machines they are. Obviously, those change from time to time, because people always bringing more in and out, and they always don't report. Now, with this, whether this passes or not, we're coming up with a system on how to make sure those fees are being collected. So for example, I'll just use example Bottle Works, has one machine, they owe the city a hundred dollars, I'm using that example. So in the spreadsheet, it will say, for example, end of January, has Bottle Works paid? No, they have not, okay. We'll, we'll ask reminders, say, hey, you owe, you owe this fee, and you have until, I, I forget the exact date, you want to pay this fee. So that's the, the system we are going with coming here in 2025. And that's not just the only thing for the amusement fees, there's other fees that have not always been collected, that have not always been tracked, that need to start getting tracked and getting collected as well. So, yes, you're right, the police chief has other important things to worry about, so that's why Councilman Bornhart and I have figured out a more productive, a more efficient system to get that collected.
But I think we should work on implementing that, or I know we're not changing anything. I think that last meeting, uh, everybody heard that number, heard that, everyone panicked, but, boy, yes, let's enforce them when we have, see where that makes it. Then if you're not making money, you're still, we're still in the one I wanted this project to be, then come back to the table and say, you know what, maybe we do need to look at the 4% and y'all continue on whatever you need to do.
Well, with right now, with what we do collect, that money just, just thrown back in the general fund.
Yeah.
It's not, yeah, it's, no, but it's not designated towards what it's actually supposed to be, I mean, what we're doing right now is not designated towards that. What we want to do is designate, what my opinion is, is designate it to, if we go to a percentage and we do it, go designate it to what it's supposed to go as amusement fee towards entertainment, to bring people into the city, so we're not out there asking businesses for money every single time. You know, the city asks for money, all the sports teams ask for money, the well's eventually gonna run dry of these businesses, and they support as much as they can, they have great local businesses, but eventually, like everything, everybody knows, costs of everything are going up, and, you know, they keep asking and asking and asking, eventually, there's not gonna be enough money for anyone anymore. So this is, is something that we can do to help stop asking, and then we don't have to do it, it's just there. And by doing this, they actually see, you know, as you say, the softball tournaments, look how many people come in there, and everyone up there is affected by that. And we could have that, you know, on a more frequent basis, events that are bringing thousands of people into the city, it's only gonna help everybody succeed. Anything else, Erica?
No. So what we were saying, so we're still saying that the 4% is where that's gonna make it happen? Why can't the money that you're collecting, now, I'm not saying I'm against the 4%, I'm not saying any of that, I'm just saying this money now that you're enforcing the hundred dollars per machine or our other fees, if you thought also how we take that for that same amusement fee, or is that not?
It is our, how it's been done, it's already been calculated into the budget for the last, for example, the ordinance you're referring to has been on the budget on the book for the last 15 years, it's out. I mean, they're reflecting a hundred dollars 15 years ago. Just imagine, if you kept with the times, it wouldn't be a hundred dollars. So that way, we need to, that's one of these things, we need to start updating what we do to hit with the times, with what other municipalities are doing, and this is what other municipalities have done, they changed it to a percent, and it has been designated to, for example, entertainment or tourism, however, however the municipality wanted to work, if that makes sense. Please say the name, sir.
Joseph Snudson. I was just wondering, I read an article where, um, seems like the state wants to get involved in this too, at 16%.
I mean, I can't help it.
How's that gonna affect what you guys are gonna do?
I mean, we don't know what the state's gonna do, it's just like, anywhere else, the state just does what they wanna do. I mean, they don't have public means like just ask people's inputs, so we can't, we can only worry about what we can worry about in ourselves, and if they come out with some new ruling that says we can't do it, then we can't do it. But we don't know what that's gonna do for us, so we just have to plan for what happens.
Have you spoken to any of your local representatives?
No, because of the attached, we don't know.
Here, here's the thing, you gotta find out, if they're gonna do it, are you gonna still wanna do it? Or are they planning to give each municipality part of what they're collecting? But what are they gonna do? You, you don't know, and right now, you wanna pass a rule, you should have been collecting years ago, but you weren't collecting.
Well, once again, we can't help what the state does, we can't stop doing what we need to do, waiting on the state to do something, or else we'll wait forever.
So basically, you're voting on collecting taxes that you were supposed to be collecting? You wanna start voting?
No. So right now, we, so right now, we, right now, the fee is for them, any machine is a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
What we're looking to change, or I'll say, I can't say us, I'll say I, what we looked into is just on the PA skill machines, that's to collect some type of new percentage to be designated to go towards how, how other municipalities do it, towards events or tourism to bring people into their municipality to help boost their local economy. Because the more foot traffic you have, the more likelihood people want to spend money, and that's what we need to do to help our local businesses succeed and to bring new businesses in. So we can't, we, we can't wait for the state to make a decision for us to make a decision.
I, I realize that.
Joe, I did talk to state representative, they're still negotiating, they haven't made any decisions, but I'm afraid if they get into the business, taxing those machines.
You ain't gonna get nothing.
Thank you. So, they've been discussing for years, but they can't come up with a path that everybody agrees on. So as long as they keep arguing in Harrisburg, it makes it better for us. And I do think if we're, would tax these on a percentage basis, a hundred dollars should go away.
Correct, go away, correct, yes, it would go, it would replace that hundred dollars, correct. Alright, anything else, Joe?
Uh, I forgot my question.
Alright, I'll make my way back. Go ahead, sir, please say your name.
I'm Wes Stevens. I wanna, I got a question. We got a letter from you guys, that you wanted to tax our pool tables too. What's, what's the deal with that?
So that's already in the ordinance, it goes back to, once again, there's many things in there that aren't being followed. For example, this also has to be, uh, so the pool tables are different from the PA skill machines that we're talking about here tonight, but if you look in the ordinance, like if you have a gumball machine, that's supposed to have a fee on it. If you have any, uh, like the pinball machines or jukebox or those types of things are supposed to be being collected. Not saying they always have been, but according to our ordinances, they're supposed to be.
Well, I got a question then, if you're saying gumball machines, are you gonna go to every store and put a tax on every bubble gum machine that's in the city?
I'm, I'm just saying.
No, I'm, I'm serious, if you're gonna tax one thing, you gotta tax it all. Are you gonna go to every business and say, your bubble gum machine's a hundred dollars?
What, what, what I think?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if you wanna tax one thing, you gotta tax it all. You cannot go across the board and say, nope, we're just gonna tax this, and we're not gonna tax that. That's BS. If you're gonna tax it, you gotta tax everything.
Oh, I agree, it goes back to, there's many things that haven't been followed, and we're trying to stay up to date with the times here and try to find a good, efficient way to do this. We haven't always done it, and we're trying to do that. So as you said, yes, I agree with you, if you're gonna do it for one, you gotta do it for all, and it has to be fair across the board. And as you said, it's something we need to revisit on is a hundred dollars fair for a pool, uh, for a pool machine or a gumball machine. But those are the things we need to figure out, and, and like, for example, like all the sort of any machines, like, there, where do they have to do it? They send the check into us automatically every year, because like, for example, Pepsi, they know about the fee, they send it automatically every year. So it goes back to, as you said, yes, it has to be fair across the board, and I think we do have to revisit, as you said, the pool machine, the gumball machine, the pinball machine, the jukebox machine, whatever it is. I think we have to revisit the prices, because it's a hundred dollars fair, that's what we need to figure out.
Well, here's, here's another point too, a lot of these places like the clubs that I belong to, that money helps out the fire department. Okay, so you're gonna come in and take money out of the budget for the fire, from us, for the fire department to upgrade our equipment, right? So you're gonna tax us a hundred dollars, just say, on the pool table, and I'm bringing this up there. We don't have the money now. We wanna consolidate, we don't have the money to buy a building. That's not, that's not on the club's fault. You guys should have thought of this a long time ago, if you were gonna tax it up. And now all of a sudden, people are making money off of this, and you want your cut. It's cool. We shouldn't have done it a long time ago, it's been on the book, top 50 years, nobody's done it, whose fault's that? You guys sitting up there, not us. Why should we read your guys' BS in our state? Because you guys can't follow your own frickin' rules that are in the book.
Oh, I, I agree with you, there's many things that we do follow, don't follow. But like I said, I'm just referring to the PA skill machines, and it'd be in the ordinance that the owner of the machine is the one who pays for that fee, not the business owner.
We pay for that too.
Absolutely.
We pay for that too. You guys, they, they get their percentage until we, and that money goes towards the building, goes towards fire jobs, it goes to helping the, the city, just like the pool tables, APA and all them play in town. You know how much business they bring in every pool season? No, you don't. Have you guys asked anybody about that?
Once again, Wes, as we said, like, we're out of date with the way we do think, we need to come up to modern time to do this.
I just think it's not fair that you, you guys wanna tax.
In my opinion, Wes, in my opinion, I think the skills machines, the, the tax be collected, that should go into, back into the fire department for the consolidation, that was my opinion. But I, I think that it should go back into, uh, the responders.
Well, we need it, if we wanna consolidate, we need building, we need to get together, we need new pieces, we need upgraded stuff. That, that, that's what the gambling does for the fire company. And people don't realize that. Yeah, we sell beer, we sell food, we sell liquor, but the majority of our money that comes over that bar is to gambling. And that's why they got the 60-40 split.
And I, and I know Fire apparatuses is cheap.
No, we're looking at a new brush truck, it's $390,000. Say you wanna give us that money?
If I had it, I would.
I didn't think so.
No, apparently they have some used stuff for sale.
No, absolutely not, we want something brand new. And we're only doing it to benefit the city, to help the residents of the city in Upper, Lower, and Stone Town. We're going out and buying a new truck, America's bought a new ladder, absolutely needed it. East End's bought a new engine, we're going out to do a brush truck, because we're the only one here in the city that has one.
The city may be this, uh, tax on the skills machine, we can reciprocate then and give back, how's that?
I just wanna know, I just wanna know why all of a sudden it just wants?
So Wes, I asked you a question, so you're saying we shouldn't collect it moving forward?
No, I'm saying if you should have collected it, you should have collected it a long time ago too, on everything.
I mean, I can't help what was done 50 years ago, or 40, or 30, we can only, we can only, we can only change what we can do moving forward. We can't change the past, we can only change moving forward. So, I mean, if, if you may agree or disagree that we do collect it, but we have, we can't just say, well, it hasn't been collected, we're not gonna continue to collect it, or we haven't done this, but we have to do something. The path that we're on is, we're not gonna succeed on the path that we're on.
Absolutely, and I agree with that, I mean, if the city's gonna take money, then if the state does something, won't we double tax on it?
Like I said, we, we don't know yet, till the state actually does something.
I'm just saying, if that happens, the state passes something, you guys pass something, that means we're getting double taxed, am I right or am I wrong?
Well, then we can revisit it then, like we said, we don't know where we're at right now with the state, because as Jim said, you know, they've been talking about it for years, they don't see a clear path. Here, this is something that we can control, that we can help bring people in, so it's something that we're having in discussion about. I mean, is it gonna get solved here tonight? Probably not, but at least we can answer questions, so people understand everyone's viewpoints.
Okay, well, I just want another thing, if you're gonna tax the skill machines and stuff, tax the softball and stuff when they come into the city too.
Wes, I have a question, Wes.
Uh, go ahead, Jim.
You made a good point about the fire department, I don't agree with Josh is saying about having more events and so, which is good for business. I'm not against business, but our fire department, all you gentlemen back here at Fire 24/7, for free, we owe you at least the money to establish the consolidation money, to build a new station, to fund the trucks and so forth. So that's where I think the money should go, to the fire department.
How about we get that from the softball field center?
Sure.
So once you come up with a fee that I've been asking for the last four years? But so Jim, I, I agree with you, the fire department does need our support and should have our support. But at the same time, then you bring me an idea to help us, to help us do that. As I've been here for, I think this is five years now, and I think we always say, yes, I think everyone in this room agrees that the fire department needs more, I mean, I wasn't gonna disagree with that, but I remember hearing any other way to help do it other than saying they need it. So let's come up with ways then, let's come up with new ways.
Right, here, there is a way.
Yeah, but the, but the funny part is, when's the last time you went to any type of budget training to figure out how to do these things? Could you answer that question?
I haven't.
What, thank you.
About years ago. But Josh, no, but.
Please do, go back.
No, no, Josh, go ahead.
No, okay.
You're in charge.
No, I'm not, I'm one of five.
You give the money away to the beer parties, that's what we need.
Oh, I'm sorry, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, because you're seeing like, I'm, I'm throwing beer parties here, I'm trying to bring people into the city, maybe if you come down to the event, you'd see what they do for the businesses.
This year, it's Josh.
No, that's okay, I understand, things happen, things happen, I get it. Please say your name, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
I hope you're happy.
So if I'm trying to reach people in the cities, helping the businesses, but by taking money from, from the businesses, you're pushing us out. Absolutely. Because a lot of the people that you're bringing in isn't bringing a penny to us. By the money that you're taking out of our pockets every month, with those little ring pink events that you put on, are not bringing us anything, nothing.
Ma'am, where's your business located, I'm sorry.
I'm actually, we have some games that we operate in the city, but I'm outside of, I'm outside of Sunbury. So you're bringing me nothing, but I'm still paying some taxes in there.
So ma'am, kind of, so, so you're saying you own the machines, I guess, that's what I'm trying to. So may I ask a question? How much does those machines make a year?
Not enough for you to take taxes out of.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I just asked a simple question. So, so I mean, so how, I mean, I'm just asking a question, I mean, you, you're not in the City of Sunbury, so I can't help that what we do in the City of Sunbury doesn't bring you business.
Well, I have been to the things, I'm sorry, but you know, it's still not enough for me to pay off the taxes and the 4%.
So you don't. So you don't believe by having more events and bringing people to town is a good thing?
I don't believe the events that you had so far haven't helped anything as far as our.
So what do you suggest the city does then? May I ask?
I'm not opposed to taxing, I mean, we pay the, we pay our taxes now on them, but I'd like to see where, like you said, that money goes into, until now, I mean, I would like to see where do you think all this additional income is going to help? Like, bringing money, how much you reject that it's going to bring, like this 4%, and what you're going to do with it?
Well, okay, ma'am, may I ask you a question? Did you come down to the New Year's Eve, yes or no?
I did.
You did or did not, I'm sorry?
I did.
You did, so was Hidden Stories open for business?
I'm going to it.
Okay, was Eclipse open?
Yes.
Was the Midtown Bistro open?
Yes.
So those businesses are normally not open all those nights, but they were open, and they were busy, and they were, and they had people in them.
Midtown Bistro was not that busy, and Eclipse had.
Excuse me, John, were you not in Midtown Bistro? Were they busy?
They're packed.
Okay, thank you.
But, um, well, Eclipse, I mean, they had maybe 30, 40 people on.
So 30, 40 people on a night that they weren't, that they, that they're never, that they're never open?
Well, I'm not saying that, but still.
So they opened, so they opened for the event to be open for business, it had 30, 40 people in the, the place.
They were drinking beer, but where were they playing?
The point was this, they were open drinking beer, spending money in their establishment. They may not have been playing the game, but the money that they paid from the machine brought people into their business. That's how they made money, am I not, am I wrong to think that, or? How did make me money, ma'am?
Taxation with representation, so it sounds like you talk about Hershey Park, they have a tax, but Hershey Park, all those people come in, they use the roads, they have graphics, they maintain all that area. Amusement machines, these are in fire companies, small businesses, that's not really gonna affect any of that. When you said for your New Year's Eve party celebration, they went to the restaurants and the bars, but those, those facilities don't have amusement machines in them, so you wanna tax the amusement machines to benefit other businesses?
Well, there's, they're, they were busy, so let me ask, but, but ma'am, actually.
Alright, yeah, I agree, but how does that affect the New Year's Eve?
So, so ma'am, so you're saying you, so you pay your hundred dollars, correct, for all your machines, correct? So, other than you're paying your hundred dollars, do you donate, sponsor, anything else throughout the city? Yes, no?
No, we're just going outside of Sunbury.
So, but, but see, but now, I'm not disagreeing with you, nobody wants to pay more in taxes for anything or cost of work. No one wants to pay more in utilities, gas, anything. But I'm telling, I'm gonna say I'm telling you, I'm gonna show you what this money can do for our local businesses. That's, I'm, I'm showing, I'm gonna show you that, and if you look at any of these other towns that have events, look at Nooklenburg, when they have the Kris Kringle thing, the city's packed, the businesses are busy. When Bucknell has their swimming con, that's not the swimming contest, the state championship swimming, the town is packed with people, people are in the businesses, they're spending money. So, I mean, if that's not, if you don't want people in the businesses, you don't think that's making businesses money? I don't know how businesses make money if people aren't in there.
Does Kris Kringle thing, oh, they pay the vendors to set up the sponsor that thing?
They pay them.
That money comes from the vendors to support that function.
Correct, and, okay, so how many thousands of people come to Nooklenburg that weekend?
So what would a vending machine have to do with sponsoring a crap show, food thing in Nooklenburg? Why would you need a tax for that, or, why do you have an event where you sell spots and have vendors come in and support that to bring people in, not an isolated tax on vending machines, hamburger zone, hot dog? I mean, where do you stop the line of who you're gonna isolate to try to draw money out to pay for somebody else's benefit of business?
So you're saying this, you, you, as long as you guys are getting your money out of your machines, you don't care what happens to the business?
I'm just saying, taxation with representation, if you wanna take money out of somebody's machines, out of their business, out of their fire company, to pay for businesses come in to go eat pizza and drink beer, it doesn't make sense.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm confused on what you're saying, you're saying.
I have, the fire companies have businesses, they have machines, you wanna ask them to promote functions for people to come in out of town that aren't gonna go to the fire companies to support them, they're gonna go for pizza, for donuts, or to Wise's? Why are you taxing one pocket to fill another pocket?
Because.
Kris Kringle, these, all those people pay their vendor spots to come in to support that function, right? So they commit for that, to support the, the businesses, and the vendors pay for that, which they sell their businesses and wears. I don't know.
It's such a poor balance of, but if you need to pull funds to do something like that, pull it from your own budget.
Ma'am, do you know how much those events cost? That's out of curiosity.
I don't, and I, I mean, I don't, and I really don't care, honestly. I mean, I don't, they don't, I'm outside of Sunbury, I have a Sunbury address, and not one thing has Sunbury ever done to come and buy a business out there.
So you're in Upper, are you in Upper Augusta or Rockville?
I'm in Upper Augusta.
So if Upper Augusta chooses not to help you, I can't help that. I'm saying, I'm.
I'm not asking for help, that's the whole thing. If I wanna do something, I promote my own business, I think everybody in here would do the same damn thing.
If you have your, your New Year's Eve, why don't you sell vendor spots like you do, and why can't you pay for it that way? Why do you expect fire companies to pay for?
You, okay, I'll just give you a, a small, what would that cost? That event alone costs eight to 10,000 dollars. We had six vendors there, so we're gonna charge a vendor 1,200 dollars to sell for a matter of four hours?
I have a bubble gum machine that makes 75 dollars a year.
I'm not talking about the whole.
I know, but you are.
Well, you, but you won't tell me right now, you won't say in front of everybody what your PA skill machines bring in a year, will you?
I will, I will.
Well, I. So, ma'am, are you guys coin taker?
Yes.
So if I look up in our, in our thing, so you guys paid every year and everything like that?
We, well, our, most of our locations pay. So, and that's the other thing, you tried to bill for us when our locations are already paying the fee, so you tried to double dip.
Well, ma'am, as we said, that would go away, why?
No, no, you're not answering the question. So you wanna say, hey, why didn't you pay? Well, that's because our locations are already paying you the fee.
I'm not, I'm just asking if you did, you said they paid, it's alright, that's, that's your guys', that's your guys' agreement. Ma'am, like I said, I'm gonna say what I'm saying is correct, but unless someone can come here and tell me how we bring more foot traffic into the city, I'm all game for it, but once again, it, it's just an idea. These, there are other municipalities doing it, and it's working in their municipalities. If we choose not to do it, that's okay, but then, that, that is what it is.
Can you clarify, sorry, clarify, you're, you're not, you're not wanting to charge a hundred dollar fee and then, as we're saying, tax, which is for fantasy fee, it's one or the other? You wanna get rid of the hundred dollar fee?
Correct.
And go straight up charging a 4% of your profit on the machine necessarily, or is that why?
It's how they do it, how the, how the gentleman explained it was, it was a. It's, it's how they do it, how the, how the gentleman explained it was, it was four percent of the intake of the machine.
Four percent of the...
You gotta do that, you gotta do that, you gotta make more money than the network!
That's what the operator needs to do.
You can't tax the gross SBO on the cost.
That's correct, that's correct, that's correct, sir.
Josh, Josh, I've been in that, I back and re-study everything that needs to be done before you start moving. I've been downtown Sunbury.
I just wish everyone would say, ma'am, once again, if you're willing to tell me what you're making on the machines, I'll happily do it.
We're private business, we're not public business.
But I, I, I know that, but, but see, like, once again, nobody wants to pay more, I understand that, but if you're, if you're with...
So, how do you start, like, why isn't it amusement, why isn't it ponies, why isn't it treadmills?
Yeah, why isn't, why isn't it...
McDonald's, Frank, he said McDonald's, and why is it we're busy, why, why would you charge them for...
There's, there's different types of taxes, like, per centile taxes and those types of things as well.
Every small chair, every barbershop chair, every, you know, bar, they tax. They bring businesses into the city, right, for every day? People commit, they need their nails done, they need their air dent, so are you charging for every chair?
Well, we can, we could say it was your idea, if you like us to.
Where's your idea to put taxes people?
Exactly, better, better be with us.
Josh.
Go ahead, please say your name and surname.
Lori Johnson. I've owned a business in this town for eighteen years, and everybody knows here that I just sold it in June. I've done everything, I started the New Year's Eve, you know I started that with SRI, with everybody else, I started it. I've seen businesses come, I've seen businesses go. My pet peeves are, is we're not collecting money for sidewalks that were supposed to be put in. Um, everybody's supposed to be charged for them if you don't have your sidewalks fixed. Where's all the money going for that, and how come it's not being collected? That's what I'd like to know, 'cause you have, guys have money that you're not even collecting. What about the two hundred dollar fee that I had to pay to get my building inspected? I'll bet you there's half in the city of Sunbury that haven't done that yet. That's more money that you're not collecting. I think you need to start out with looking at that stuff first. I think it's a great idea to bring more stuff into the city if you can do it. First of all, you're gonna have to have the people to do it, 'cause you know if you didn't do New Year's Eve, it wouldn't happen, just like I know. If, if it wasn't me and Gillian and Jenna, we wouldn't have got it done either, Maggie, it wouldn't have happened. You know what I mean, it just doesn't take, it takes time, and people don't wanna do that anymore. You know, and when you look at these machines, you wanna tax these machines, but Penn Jersey, they're making a boatload of money on those machines. My business, Marquette's will tell ya, they were my people for many, many years, and they had their machines in my place. I didn't make that much money, 'cause people didn't come to my place for that. You know, so I didn't make any money, so if you're gonna tax these machines, you have to look at who's making money and who isn't making money. But I think before you go doing this, you need to look at everything else in the city that's not collected. And you need to start collecting that money, and it should have been done years ago. And I know it's been left go to the way ladies, you know what I mean? And everybody's working hard, John's trying to get the, the code office up and collect this stuff, there's just not enough people to do everything. That's what it comes down to. So, if there's anybody in this room that would like to be hired, or to help them get this started and maybe not collect the tax, I'm now fully retired, and I'm enjoying every minute of it, but, you know what I mean? And I try and still help out doing things when I can. But that's where the problem is, there's not the people to do it, and you're not, you don't stay on top of it all the time. You know, so, and I'm not complaining, whatever, I'm just trying to make it where, you know, you're aware, but you know still what's going on. We're having the same thing with SRI, we don't have the help to get SRI going, you know, and keeping the Albright Center. It's going slowly with a small group of people that are doing it, you know? But sitting in here and complaining and bitching about it ain't gonna help anything. You gotta really get the people to do the stuff that you need done, and look at all of this stuff before you go complaining about it. Dick.
Thank you.
Yep.
Please say your name, sir?
Uh, Dave Schultz, I'm a supplier of PA skill games. And, let me begin first to say, I'm not against regulation or taxation, as long as it's done properly. And I think that's what's escaped on us here. You know, not all of, your question was, how much do these machines make? That's from nothing to a lot, and everything in between. No one really, you know, no one's gonna state it for a fact, but the question is, who's gonna be the reporting agency on this? It's gonna be self-reporting as far as profits go, and how are you gonna tax them? Not all machines are created equal, PA skill can be trapped, properly done, but not all machines are created equal, and they will escape you simply. So, you need to, I think right now what you guys are doing is putting the carriage before the horse. You really need to get your facts straight, and get your data straight before you move on.
Thank you.
Sir, sir, I got a question.
Certainly.
Is there any areas that you, your machines, that aren't taxed at present time?
Aren't taxed as far as municipalities?
What we're dis, yeah, what we're discussing here this evening?
No, they're all finished out. All municipalities have something similar to yours, hundred dollars, fifty dollars for them, with each municipality it is.
So, you don't have any, in a situation like we're discussing here?
Yes.
You say you don't?
I do.
Oh, you do?
Do you have some under, oh, not, no, not the same one, I'm just... Other than the percentage that we pay to Asomatic, who owns the software programs.
Owns the rights to the machine?
Yes. The software, they only rate the software.
What do they charge?
They take twenty percent off the top.
Okay.
Yes.
Does anybody know what the state charges on slot machines in Pennsylvania?
Forty-two percent.
Forty-six percent.
Uh, yeah, it's close to fifty percent plus four percent local share. So...
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
If the state charges, you're forty-two?
Forty-six.
Forty-six percent, almost fifty percent, the state charges on slot machines, and, and plus an additional four percent for the local share. I forgot what it's called, where they...
Local share account, it's the grant.
Local share.
The local share account, it's the grant.
Account, yeah.
So, Rick, what are you saying, we're low?
I'm just saying, when the state gets into it, I think they're gonna jump into a big, Shapiro actually proposed his twenty-three budget, a forty-two percent tax on skill machines. It didn't gain any traction, but that's what he's proposing, from state level, that's...
Yeah, the argument is, they don't know where the money's gonna go.
Well, and that's...
Everybody wants the money, but they...
Well, it's like my turnpike fees, they don't actually go to the turnpike, they go to the state radio somewhere.
Uh, please say your name, sir?
Uh, well, frankly, uh, I can clarify something, uh, that, one of the reasons why that tax is so aggressive is because casino slot machine has something like ninety-seven percent hold, and so just about every second, that machine's going right back to that house. Skill games do not function like that. The majority of the winnings actually go back to the player through the game of skill. So, you can't do gross going into the game, because most of that's going right back out to the player, the holes are significant if they look. I mean, it's, it's really truly, I mean, this slide, you know, we talked about Pennsylvania skill, it's the only adjudicated skill game in the state of Pennsylvania for us. I mean, just the way it functions is inherently different. As well as just bringing the question, other, you know, competitors, which do not function, they are not actually skill games. They have winning levels and switch it, uh, the holes are much closer without slot machine. I mean, would those be enforced upon, 'cause I'm sure they exist on businesses here, they're all across the state now. Would those be, you know, treat as equal games they are? Or is it just Pennsylvania skill gets taxed for, you know, essentially providing a game that, you know, functions in a more, you know, a more transparent area?
Back in the day, punch ports were eighty-twenty, went right back to the day, they won't sell punch ports.
I think so.
Yeah. How close are those machines to that?
I mean, it really, it's, it's falling business.
So, what, what is, I mean, I don't know the percentage, like, what is the percentage payout from the skill or the not used?
Being there from fifteen, that's a rough...
Of a payout?
A payout?
Yeah.
That's, that's the profit.
Oh, the profit, no.
Rick, you said about Shapiro, Senator Yaw is thinking about introducing a bill for the state where all the skills machine will be connected to one central, uh, machine, where you can tell how much money that the machines make.
They, they are, they are.
They can do that now.
Yeah, so...
So, they're, they're planning on, they said they could make up to three hundred million dollars a year for these machines.
That's at a fifteen percent tax rate?
And I can't...
Asomatic, Frank's company, put that in, that built through, even price speed.
I can also answer some of these questions about the state regulation, and as, as what is currently being discussed on the table, like you said, no one has a pulse of all of this happening. Uh, a percentage of that fifteen percent will be a lot allocated to local municipalities. So, I mean, it's, it's, as an industry, you know, eight hundred percent of nature, I think that cuts up, but if we're not necessarily close to regulation, it's just about, you know, going about it in a fair, uh...
I think, what's your recommendation, if you have more machines out there?
Uh, you know, it's, it's an interesting thing, 'cause there's a lot of, you know, obviously I work for one company, but uh, there's a lot of legal gains out there right now, and it's skyrocketed in the last five to ten years. Um, so, you know, I'd be glad to see a lot of them off the streets. Uh, I actually have another state, it's one of these states where we've been removed from the slot stuff, from just the foreign store slots. So, um, we, we kinda like to level and play good with some decent law enforcement, so that's one of the reasons why we see regulations. So, that look on us and everyone, and no one likes to fool me between the casino and where we're here to help out small businesses and firms.
Thank you, sir. Please say your name?
Julie.
Julie Versus? My name is, um, yeah, the article just came out within the past week that the Republican and Democratic state senators sent a memo to each of their chambers to review this situation, and they're looking into tax the games for the first time at sixteen percent rate, and require state licenses to operate the terminals. And that's just been in the past week that that article came out, and I think it was spotlighted.
Thank you, Julie.
Frank, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Do you know anything about the movement on the bills that we're talking about in the state committees?
Yes, somewhat. Um, you know, there are always still little, like, two steps forward, three back. Um, I, Shapiro's really wanting to get something done, you know, there's a lot of dying holes in the state budget that need to be built. Um, this is something that could, you know, solve that problem. There's, you know, it's all holes, but it is, we cannot, I will admit, some take down load a couple times a year.
So, it's not coming up or over any time soon?
Uh, it's, you know, we, we look like something, you know, like, I actually think it's supposed to be discussed for, but...
That's valid, no, that's, that's sooner than I thought, that's sooner than I thought, no, I have one other, I have one other question. Um, the, if that comes to fruition, do you know if they're talking about exacerbating any local ordinance?
It would supersede all the more, that's what I said.
So, if the state puts a tax on anybody local even has such a tax, it's gonna wipe that out?
Correct.
I just wanted to put that out.
You said there's, in that bill, where the fee says signed for the local municipalities?
The goal is to have, you know, a percentage of that sixteen goes directly to the local, you have local townships and municipalities.
That would mean the machines you have in your municipal?
It, like, you, you know, if you percentage base, so it's just all, you guys get that one or two, or whatever it comes down to, get haggled out to do, yeah.
So, with your experience, so, I mean, if Senator Yaw's gonna be the legislative champion, and the Democratic governor's pushing for it, and I would assume somebody in the House is already making that up?
Danilo Vargos.
Who was it?
Danilo Vargos has sponsored it in the House.
So, I mean, I would think that by general bipartisan support, it's gonna be fast track.
I would think that, um...
I would assume it'd be more reasonable.
There's, there's some other forces at play, uh, that just do kind of, we don't need to hit it, but casinos actively, uh, steamrolled it many times before. Um, you know, and it seems like a percentage point is created, or at least, I think Shapiro himself said he would like closer to fifty percent. I gave my speech on why that, you know, it's not a set number, um, some functions, they don't like. So, you know, uh, so that, I don't think you realize the money that we make. So, that's, that's some of the stuff that would, yeah, I, I couldn't be like, it's gonna happen, so.
Please say your name, sir?
John Boonbaum. Wouldn't it be much more simple if you just jack the price up, instead of a hundred dollars a machine, for a hundred and a quarter, or a hundred and a half? Wait and see what the state does.
That is a, that is a solution that the council could use if they go that route as well.
To me, it'd be more simple, who's gonna wall the gate for, who's gonna block and shut?
We already, we already have to do that now, 'cause some people don't bank now, so, but I understand what you're saying.
And as far as bringing more people into Sunbury, a lot of people wanting to come down, but Marcus Street after dark. You ever get around the tight, walking down some of these streets, and see what's on the streets?
I mean, I did when I was younger, and during the hours, until two AM, but, and it's, there's not many opening anymore.
There's a people were shared of.
I mean, that is a, I mean, that's an option that the council could go with.
It'd be much more simple if you wanna avoid confusion. Some weeks you make money on selling machines, some weeks you don't, depending on how much they pay out. I'll leave one, three weeks dry. If it was prior to that, they pay it out, they don't pay out every week.
I mean, like I said, that's another solution the council could, another option. Anything else, too?
No, nothing to do with school machines, I have a thousand questions.
All right, uh, please say your name?
Joni O'Farrell with Sunbury legalization, so I just have a couple of things. I think it's been a very good discussion, and I'm glad you had this public meeting tonight. I think it does show that we need to be doing a little bit more research, and I think it is good to know that, you know, even though we don't have control over what the state does, it's good to know what, what's going on in the state now, and finding out today that there's something in the works that could actually be imminent is, um, I think, very valuable information to have. And to know that whatever you decide to do on the local level, has, is affected by what the state does and vice versa, on the business people that we're trying to help, that we wanna see businesses in Sunbury doing well. So, I think also, now, you mentioned that you had been doing a really good job of collecting it, but over the last year you did. Do you know how much was collected last year in your fees?
I, I don't know, without seeing the numbers, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's good homework to do and be able to present, when you're gonna present an idea like this.
Yeah.
And then, um, also, sometimes you can maybe do some modeling, do the math, to figure out, you know, what your estimate of the benefit to the city or what the income to the city would be, so you know, you know, that you can kinda compare, is this worth the squeeze? Um, and then, the last thing I'm gonna talk, um, you know, kinda comment on, is the use of the funds and, you know, the, the events in the city. So, yes, events are organized, SRI organizes events to support local small businesses, to attract visitors, to, you know, to grow community pride, um, but they're not the only thing that's necessary for community and economic development. So, um, there might be other uses that would help the appearance, maybe better lighting downtown, you know, it is very dark, and, um, encouraging businesses, one of the things that we're pursuing, you know, we're in the blueprint community program, we'll have a strategic plan by the end of this year, and I can tell you that part of that plan is downtown management, and that's a downtown management, uh, manager's job, is to bring ideas, do small events, or actually bringing people into the downtown, getting them into the businesses. And there are many strategies that they use that we probably haven't tried yet in Sunbury or for some time. And I think that it would be, I would like to see the city invest in something like that, that is a proven program and strategy through the state. If, you know, if we get accepted into the program, it's a five-year program that we get support, we're eligible for grants and things like that, that your investment is multiplied. So, I just want you to keep those things in mind, and as you're kinda chewing on these ideas, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please say your name, sir?
Joseph Stutler. Seems like the question tonight shouldn't be so much, how much are you gonna charge the machine, or whatever? It should be, how are we gonna fix the fact that we aren't collecting the fees properly now? Because then, if you were collecting them properly, you would know how much income you're gonna get from it, how much revenue you're gonna get from it, and then you'd be able better to suggest that you tax it at some percentage. So, what you need to do is have somebody... So what you need to do is have somebody collecting it, find out how much you collect in a year's time, and then you could move forward from that. But asking this question now, and that, that question in the, um, House could be decided as early as May, from what I've heard. But it's all up to you.
I mean, I can, I mean, I can tell you, I mean, I don't have the number. I can just, if I, I can get you tomorrow, I can tell you how much we collected last year. I could tell you, they say Councilman Horner and I came up with a way last year. I know our officers went out by the number of machines, so did his personnel to make sure the numbers match up. Because, you know, machines are always coming and going, so we had that way. Now, we're trying to keep track of on a spreadsheet, not only with that fee, but all the other fees that we don't collect, who has paid, who hasn't paid, and getting notification out to those individuals, not with, not, not the, the skilled machines, but, you know, different types of fees that need to be paid anyway that we have not collected.
Well, who, who's in charge?
I got the number right here of the businesses, how many skill machine each business has, what other machines they have in here. It's all in the spreadsheet. As far as collecting it, we're waiting to see what happens here to, to move forward.
Okay, does that also include all the machines?
No, that one.
No, it includes all the machines.
Includes all the machines.
Even how many pieces of wokagami you bought last year.
John, how many store tools do we have in the city according to your chart?
According, according as of.
I believe it was a hundred and thirty.
Right now. It is a hundred and thirty.
That we know of. Hundred and thirty that we know of. Meaning like, you know, there may be three in there this week, like, all right, we're doing good, we're gonna bring in five. So the last time we went out and did the rounds and checked, it was a hundred and thirty, probably.
Just skill, just skill machines.
Yeah, not all a hundred and thirty paid either.
When was the last time you did the rounds?
It was back in the fall, I believe it was.
I had them out three weeks ago.
Okay, nevermind, I had them out three weeks ago.
They ran off.
Yeah, I, I agree. Like, yeah, that's the bottom worst.
Yeah, so.
Wouldn't it be wise then that whoever owns the machines, would have the sticker on the machines? Who owns the machines?
There's supposed to be one, maybe there is. That's because that's what we checked when we went out for a skill machine, we looked for the sticker. That's how we got who owns it.
So they can, yeah, they check our place, and, uh, we have seven machines in there. They asked me, well, who owns the machines? So apparently the sellers weren't very visible.
No, sometimes you could, but they don't want to move the machines either, because they don't, but they try to get to it as best they can.
Do you know the guy who owns the machines? John, if somebody brings a machine and doesn't report it, what's the penalty for that?
I believe it's five percent, five percent if they make first, yeah, like.
Five percent if they're.
Five percent if they're. So it's a hundred and five?
It should be the duty of the city treasurer to notify all persons subject to the payment of license fees as provided in this chapter only before the first day of May each year. It says licenses payable, you're not due five, uh, six months, so the same, plus a penalty of five percent.
So the five dollars on the hundred, so it might as well be cheap.
That's what we're trying to.
Yes, sir.
Mark Stiller, if I, if I could interject, the, one of the other markets that you business in, Scranton, um, their codes people, once we pay the fee to the city, their codes people have the sticker on the game. So that would solve your problem.
And that was one of the things that we talked about.
If somebody brings more machines in, your guy goes out and there's five machines, do a sticker.
We have a sticker, not a sticker, a placard, like a, like a permit, which doesn't cost anything, it's just a permit. This business has so many skill machines or whatever, and then it's signed by the code officer or the police, and it's hanging there. So the police or the code officer or whoever goes in to inspect it, they can see that permit, know how many machines are supposed to be in there. So we, we're doing that.
Quick, quick question, sir. Yeah, go ahead, John. John, do you, you're, are you a machine owner?
Are you?
Yes, sir.
My name's Mark, I'm.
Mark, all right.
Yes, I, I work for Millie and Houston.
Okay, I, I see, I spoke. Do you pay the fees for all of Millie?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
So what we do is we get, we have a list of all of our, all of our, 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 our customers we have in your area.
Yes.
And traditionally, what ends up happening with most municipalities is they'll send us a bill for all the machines. We pay it, and then we collect half of the, of the fee from the end user.
See, we, we, I, Millie, I've, I've spoken to you guys before, there are businesses like you, like, if, if everybody reported to us like Millie did, like, there's places that say we have all, all the machines, and there's people that have machines all throughout town and never tell us, we can't catch them. They're hidden in back, stuck back.
But unfortunately, sir, it, it goes back to Frank's point, there's a lot of illegal devices out there.
Yes.
The people who are, are running the illegal equipment don't, they hide in the shadows.
I said, you're in credit somewhere, you don't worry.
The problem that Pennsylvania skill has, I shouldn't say problem, is we stay in the daily. And so everyone always wants to take us on, because we're not hiding.
Right.
Our name's on the game. Paysonatic's name is on the game. We're not hiding anything, okay? We're out here, do business the correct way. So that, that's why, that's why we don't, but unfortunately, to our chagrin, in most cases, we get singled out. I keep hearing newsters say Pennsylvania skill.
Yeah.
Like, it's a bad word.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
I don't mean there's a bad link at all.
We're not your enemies, sir.
Yeah, no, no, no.
There's a lot of other people that are, but we aren't. You know, so I just, I would be careful with the whole taxing thing, because you can get to a point, again, our whole business model, to Frank's point, is a non-traditional source of revenue to a small business owner. That's what we do, okay? We're not out there making millions of dollars. We're trying to help the fire department get a brush truck. We're trying to, you know, not to mention, Pennsylvania skill does about one point two million in charitable giving a year. We gave out to over twenty-five hundred local fire departments. We're out there trying to help the community. We're out there, in, in which we do business. And Frank can certainly attest to that from Paysonatic's end as well. We're the manufacturer, they're the software server. So.
I, yeah, I've actually done a charitable board.
Yep.
I, I go across the road, I'm from one, and here, um, we, I've actually, we find out boards, we have your local, uh, first responders submit for grants. Uh, I mean, it's, it's something that we, it's, is there a different.
I just, I, I just question board, and, and. Yeah. If you, if you get too aggressive with your taxation, then you're just gonna hurt the small business. That's all I can say. It's not gonna necessarily help you guys. In the short term, it might, in the long term, it's gonna put people out of business. You don't want empty business fronts in your town. That's all we, so just be, just be cognizant of that. I think raising your fee is probably a really good idea. You know, we, we're all over the state. I have six offices throughout the state of Pennsylvania, so we cover the whole entire state, border to border. And, you know, it, it ranges depending on what part of the state you're in. Some of it's a little bit ridiculous, but that notwithstanding, it is what it is. I would think it's four hundred and fifty dollars a machine. Yeah, that's, that's out of, that's out of the general. But it is what it is. If you want to do business in that bigger entity, you pay.
It's the average.
It's hard to say, sir, because I have it from twenty-five dollars a machine to four fifty. So I would say probably the average is somewhere maybe around a hundred, a hundred and fifty, something like that. If I, if I averaged it all out, um, like I said, that would be a better question for my accounting department to answer than myself. But, like I said, we handle that all in-house and make sure you guys get paid. We're not trying to. We, Paysonatic and Millie and Houston, and, and most operators aren't trying to, to fraud any. They're also paying income tax on the money they earn off the machine. So I think you gotta be careful with the whole double taxation thing. It's been ten ninety-nine, our people lived in here, and they gotta pay income tax, or that tax goes safe, safe, whatever. So if you're charging the tax on top of that, you'd be under that whole annual norm as well. Uh, so I think sticking with the fee might be a better option. And I'm certainly not telling anybody what to do. I'm just giving you my idea, because that's all.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name, please.
Back on fire companies. You know, twenty-five years ago, how many fire companies were in cities in Sunbury? And how many are in today, keep taking pieces and pieces and pieces? And then they're blown away, like one of these is gone now. So is the city ready to pay full-time firefighters in this city?
Yes.
Instead of volunteers? If you chase everybody away and take all of them, if you look at these, these, uh, fire companies, they're not brand-new buildings. They're old buildings, they need a lot of maintenance and a lot of work. Um, and then also, if you want to tax, what about the weeks that the, the machine loses money? Are you gonna give that back to, to the owner of the machine? Because there's weeks that the machines lose money. They own it all along, not all of this. And you say roughly ten percent is what you get. But, you know, there's weeks that seem used, that seem lost. So is the city gonna pay that back instead of you paying tax, them paying tax, and then give that back to the law safety? So it's, it's a lot, like, everyone is staying in here, a lot to think about. Your fire companies, what they do for charity and all that, don't keep hammering them, because they're gonna disappear, and then you're gonna put, then you're paying full-time fire, fire department.
Any other comments at this time?
There's a couple chairs.
Any other comments? I guess we can adjourn this meeting, we'll start the regular council meeting here in late.
Good, save. Thanks.